To all of us on Zoom and members of the public who are joining us tonight. For the regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council on Wednesday, November 3rd, 2021. And we're starting pretty much exactly on time. I think the clock is 6:32. Also, this is a special night because we're having a special joint meeting of the Larkspur City Council and the Larkspur Planning Commission. Which will commence after the city council meeting, which shouldn't take all that long. And we'll be welcoming members of the planning commission to join us when we adjourn the regular meeting at the conclusion of that. Again, this is a meeting being conducted by video conference only. The agenda has the Zoom call in information if members of the public want to take advantage of that. To watch the meetings or participate during opportunities for public comment. And with that, I think we'll get started, beginning with the roll call.
Councilmember Kendall.
I am here.
Councilmember Paulson.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Mayor Harrow.
I'm here. And Councilmember Helmer is not here for personal reasons. Now, the pledge of allegiance, my favorite part. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And that will conclude agenda item number one. Agenda item number two is public comment time. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items that are not listed on the agenda. Or are part of the consent calendar, which is described in the agenda. There'll be other opportunities to speak on matters that are on the agenda. So if there are members of the public, this is your opportunity to speak. Please, when you get started, state your name and preferably where you live. We won't, not expecting we'll have a lot of members from the public. We'll try to keep things to three minutes, but we won't be too rigid about that. And just keep in mind that for members of the public who that do want to use this opportunity. The city council is not in a position to comment or take any further action other than in a very limited way. So with that, Allison, I know we have one public comment that came in in writing.
That's correct. And our first spoken comment tonight will come from Laura Ethel.
Okay, Laura, please go ahead.
Thank you. I did send in a written comment. I would like to assure you that this is not an implied criticism of this Larkspur City Council. I have had a bad experience with another agency. And I know that everyone is being asked to consider what kind of meetings.
So Laura, Laura, is this your comment relating to the item on the consent calendar on that?
Yes, I thought you were asking for that at the same time.
No, what I was asking. What I was asking for is anything that's not either on the formal agenda or on the consent calendar. If you'd like to have discussion, it's okay. It's no problem. So it's confusing. If you'd like to have an opportunity for the council to discuss that matter. Which is 4.3 on the consent calendar, you're free to request that it be taken off calendar when we get to that in a moment.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the instructions. Thank you.
When we get to the consent calendar, I will be asking members of the city council and members of the public. If they would like to take any of the items that are on the consent calendar off the calendar for separate consideration and discussion. And if you'd like to have that occur with item 4.3, which is the resolution authorizing the city. In various advisory bodies to hold meetings by teleconference. That would be your time to request the removal of that item. And we could have a brief staff report and we could take comments from both council and yourself and anyone else at that time. Hopefully that was clear.
Okay, our next public comment will come from John.
John, what's your last name, John? You're gonna have to unmute John.
How was that? You got me now?
Yes.
Okay, this is comments on the 1251.
John, can you just give us your last name and maybe where you live?
John Warren.
Okay.
Comments on the 1251 Elysio project. It's clear after spending time with this that the city of Larkspur is pretty much a vocal partner in this 1221 Elysio project. Like us on South Elysio, we are being left behind as the board of supervisors disregards everyone and jams this bad idea forward. So my question is, did you as a group there consider? Before signing up for this, if there are adequate support services for the local medical community that would support the folks at 1251? Did law enforcement get contacted to find out what any kind of input they might have with regard to this whole community being dropped into the neighborhood? Is it possible that you reviewed the many issues that the age group from 40 and potentially 50 individuals? What kind of problems that they might have that'll end up being brought to the neighborhood? The rest of us and the rest of us, did you consider the rest of us who lived here? You consider the comment commitment, but to ECS who will now have an $11 million property without having any responsibility to the city, county. Or environment and yet still in your jurisdiction. So there's zero benefit to this in this neighborhood and surrounding community. And I know you don't comment at this time, but who really wins in this besides ECS? Thank you.
Thank you, John. And this might be an opportunity to remind the public that there will be a public meeting again conducted by Zoom. Tomorrow evening. Dan, do you have a time for that? Dan Schwartz?
Six to eight PM.
Six to eight?
Thank you, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so and folks can get information. I think that has been provided in our meeting minutes and other information provided by the city. I think it's also on the city website. So if the public is interested in participating in that meeting. That's probably a good resource to get information about the meeting itself as well as background information on the project. Anyone else from the public?
Our next comment will be from Joan.
Joan. Was her last name Joan?
Warren.
Joan Warren, okay.
Yep. Yeah, mine, my comments are a little bit harsh. I'm very, very frustrated and I'm getting very angry about this whole program. So Mayor Harrow and council members, some Greenbrier, Larkspur and Kentfield neighbors. Became aware of Home Key approximately six weeks ago. Most by accident, most still don't know. Wouldn't a prudent and reasonable elected body be willing and open to reach the community if this was a win for us as well as for you? Fact is, it's not. This is a neighborhood that works to maintain a safe environment for those who live, work, attend school and play here. That's our children, parents, grandparents, medical school and public safety personnel. Did you know there are six schools within a one quarter mile radius of the proposed site? Six. What other community in Marin County has this demographic? It represents families who have worked hard to live in this neighborhood. It was their choice to live here. It represents families who love their kids so much. Sorry, I'm getting emotional. Many relocated so their children would receive a good education in an environmentally sound and safe community. The Home Key project is forcing this neighborhood to align with the wrong choices others have made. And with that, a take it or leave it position from local and state politicians. Creekside Park is next door and there are two other parks and a walking and cycling path within one quarter mile of 1251. Along with recreational areas, South Elysio Drive is a neighborhood thoroughfare for schoolchildren and families. Not only that, what is the short and long term environmental impact to the Corder Madera Creek and its neighboring areas? You plan to add 43 to 50 new homeowners? Nowhere along this creek or any other creekside neighborhood would that pass local environmental and planning departments. What is the financial impact and commitment to Marin County taxpayers? There will be one and the obligation has no end date. We're hearing sex offenders, the seriously mentally ill and drug and alcohol abusers will move into this neighborhood. This is not widespread public knowledge, is it? It's documented that absolutely no communication was made to the many homeowners on or near South Elysio, Kentfield, Larkspur, Greenbrier. That includes my family. What private sector company would get away with this reckless and unrestricted development in this family and environmentally sensitive neighborhood? This is a terrible idea for this community. Your lack of due diligence to understand this neighborhood is irresponsible. Please reconsider.
Thank you for that, Joan. Allison, who else is in the queue at this point?
Next one here from Jeffrey Caltrader.
Okay, Jeffrey Caltrader, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Jeff Caltrader and I'm from Larkspur. I just wanted to say that over the summer, as you guys know, the Silver Peso posted a live music outdoors in an area that was set up in their parking lot. Designated for the bar to expand into the outdoor area. And my wife and I attended several of the Sunday afternoon events there. And I just wanted to say it was a really, it was a really great time. The music was great, but more importantly, it brought together a really diverse group of community members in the Larkspur area. And for the price of $7 for a beer, you could sit out there for two hours and mingle with a lot of people you probably wouldn't have met otherwise. And everybody just had a really, really good time and it was, which is awesome. So. I just wanted to say that, you know, as you think about the future of downtown and how to plan post pandemic. It would really, I think, benefit the community to have more outlets like this where the community can get together for not a lot of money. You don't have to drop 100 bucks at Perry's or the Left Bank. You can, you can go out there and just spend $7 and be with people that you haven't met before. Get to know them and it just makes the community a lot more vibrant, I think, and a lot closer too. And I think coming out of these difficult post pandemic times and the political fracture that we have in the country. It's really just nice to have people get together, meet each other and have a lot of fun over, over a beer and some music. So please, please be open minded to issuing more permits and allowing for more events like this to happen in the future. I think it would really benefit the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. And anyone else in the queue, Allison?
Yes, well, next here from caller ending in 1402.
Okay. Okay, good, James.
Just as a apropos of the music at the Silver Peso, which actually I haven't heard anything about. But I know that there are a number of residential buildings, both single family homes and apartments in the vicinity. And their concerns would have to be consulted and considered. Before any kind of substantial expansion of outdoor music occurred, just as the folks who are concerned about the South Elysio project. Want to be consulted. So there are a number of stakeholders in regard to the potential for live music. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Anyone else?
Yes, in addition to the email comment received prior to the meeting, an additional email has just come in that I'll read aloud. For as long as three minutes permits. This email comes from Aubrey Way. She writes, hi, Larkspur Council. I wanted to reach out to encourage you to speak up on the South Elysio homeless housing site. I know it is technically in Greenbrier, but the site is on the creek and I think Larkspur has a vested interest in making sure it does not harm the Larkspur community. I have two specific concerns that I think are important to Larkspur. The first is that there is no environmental review for this project located on a creek with endangered species. The second is that tier one and tier two sex offenders are allowed to live there near Larkspur schools. I believe that the existing program structure needs to be modified at the Elysio location. Or if the existing program structure is the priority, then the location needs to change to another location nearby. I strongly believe that there needs to be some basic guardrails specific to the location to protect the Larkspur and nearby communities. If there are no guidelines or guardrails, then we can't be surprised when the worst possible outcomes become a reality and we can't change the rules after the fact. So we certainly should be able to agree on very basic protections for the community and environment, given the proposed location. And again, that came from Aubrey Way and that will be available on the online agenda packet following the meeting. And I'm looking for any final raised hands or emails, public comment. And there's no further public comment.
Well, and for information that reading of the email was well within three minutes, as well within two minutes. So thank you for that. So I think that that ends the public comment agenda item number two. Agenda item number three is for presentations and proclamations, but we don't have anything set up for tonight. So we will move to the consent calendar at this time. And it's in the agenda and before we proceed to consideration of a vote on that. I want to give an opportunity first to the council and then to the public to see if there are any items on the consent calendar. That folks would like to be removed for separate consideration. So first, the council, anyone wish to remove an item? I'm seeing shaking of heads.
No.
So good. Well, we'll, we'll move on to see if there's a request from the public to remove. An item from the consent calendar and I think we did have a request pending on item number 4.3.
That's. That's Laura Ethel has her hand raised.
Okay. All right. So Laura, you want to have this item removed? I think that's consistent with what we were talking about before.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, well, let's, let's remove it and ask first for a staff report on this item. And then we'll bring it back to the council and then we'll hear from you, Laura, and anyone else from the public who wishes to speak.
Mr. Mayor, this is essentially a standing item every 30 days so that you affirm that. There's still a sufficient emergency for the council to conduct its business. By teleconference, Zoom in our case. And that the portions of the Brown Act that were waived under the executive order at the beginning of the pandemic. Should still apply in this particular case. And so. You're taking that action to affirm that for the next 30 days, that emergency still exists and that the council and all of its commissions and boards. Can continue to conduct their business over the next 30 days electronically.
Any comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, let's go to the public, Laura. And again, let's try to keep things to three minutes if you could.
You're being asked now to weigh in every 30 days. It seems awfully burdensome to me. But every 30 days, you're being asked to decide whether to continue with remote meetings. To go to hybrid or to go to in-person meetings again. And. This is not a criticism of this council. However, I would like you to keep in mind. If you do make a change, that you keep in mind that there is something that has changed in the world and that is. People who are immune compromised have a much more difficult time. Coming to a public meeting than they did before the pandemic. If you finally decide, and at some point you will finally decide to go back to in-person meetings. And I hope you will permit us to have remote access when that does occur. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Laura. Anyone else from the public on this?
I'm looking for any further raised hands or email comments. And there's no further public comment.
Okay, good. Well, unless council members disagree, I'd like to keep this item still as a part of the consent calendar. And I'm not seeing any disagreement with that. In which case I'll ask for a vote for approval of the consent calendar.
I, I'm willing to move. I just had one question. I'm sorry, I was not on video when, before we went to the public. So permission to ask a question?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Just to clarify, if we did have in-person meetings. This Zoom format would be identical, right? We would still have the same teledials, same access. The difference would be instead of five speakers for council members, they would be sitting on one dais.
There's actually a number of technologies that we're evaluating to do hybrid meetings. Some are behaving the way you just described and others behave differently than the way you just described. We haven't yet selected our final one, although. City Clerk Allison Vallas did a lot of work in the summer with the media center of Marin, who does our filming. To look at different options. So I suspect it will end up being similar to what you're describing, but. I'd rather not say affirmatively tonight that that's exactly what it'll look like.
So it sounds like the intent of the council is to maintain full access, you know, to address Ms. Ethel's concern. You know, full attendance, public comments, et cetera, is possible. The only difference is you wouldn't be in the room.
To be honest, I never asked the council. I just assumed we were going to do hybrid meetings. I've been working with Allison on it for a long time and. I, the technology is moving rapidly. That's why I don't want to commit to exactly what it'll look and feel like. Several companies are marketing to us right now, different solutions to make it a more seamless experience.
And Gabe, just want to clarify it. If your question is about technology. As Dan suggested, that's in the works. If your question is about the structure of the meetings, I don't think anybody's anticipating any change with that.
Okay, thank you. I'm willing to move the consent calendar.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Kendall, seconds. Let's have a vote.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Harrow?
Yes, and with that vote, the consent calendar is approved. And we will move on to agenda item number five, which is the city manager's oral report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to take a stab at a share screen because I want to, if I can make it work, I'm going to show a video. Here in one second to make sure I get it right.
If you get it right, you're better than I am.
I'm struggling to get this video to come up, so. I will have to save it for another day. It is not cooperating with this. So let me tell you what I was going to show you. I had this great video to show you the geyser that occurred near the American Legion during the storm. On the heaviest day of the rain and folks that live near downtown know exactly what I'm talking about. We had a backup of one storm drain. I was going to show it to you because I'm very proud that all the effort and work that Public Works did. Meant we only had one storm drain that really behaved badly. We had a few problems here or there, but we really only had this one significant problem. And we had that problem because we had fixed pipe up about 100 feet away. And. That's part of a story about storm drains. Storm drains are a system and unfortunately we're, over the years, we've had to piecemeal our system instead of. Dealing with it in a logical systematic approach. And so. This situation actually illustrates that I'm really excited that our engineering staff is now videotaping all of our storm drains. As we prepare to deliver to you a comprehensive plan on how to address them citywide. Much like we addressed the roads over the last five years, I think our next big discussion is how to address all of the storm drains throughout the city. But I want to acknowledge the Yeoman's work our Public Works crews did during the storm. They were essentially in Larkspur for a day and a half straight. Making sure that everybody was safe and secure. You've seen a lot of downed trees around town and a lot of caution tape around some of those trees, particularly in a few of the parks. You know, they were out there making sure nobody had gotten hurt and that debris was removed or put in a safe condition or controlled condition as quickly as possible. We estimate we sustained about $100,000 of damages and we're certainly putting in for what potential FEMA reimbursement potential is out there. A lot of it was the damage from the storm drain and the cleanup that we had to do, but also from the various trees and the arborist cost to deal with them. The other thing I wanted to let the council know is that. We are talking with the energy groups and I'm not going to steal Councilmember Paulson's thunder because I think he's going to report more about this. There's a lot of activities going on this weekend and some of them will be in and around city hall. So we encourage folks to keep an eye out for announcements about that. And I'll probably let it sit at that because I think Councilmember Paulson will provide a lot more detail when he talks. And then lastly, if folks aren't aware, I'm going to tee up for the mayor and remind him that he should talk a little bit about our letter we recently issued. Through the mayor about our concern about potentially redistricting our congressional district. So I'm sure he had that on his list, but I'm going to remind him because I think the public would be very interested in hearing about it. An unusual city manager report from me because most of what I'm trying to do is queue it up for you and I'm going to turn it back to you now.
Well, let me, let me exercise a prerogative to focus on the last item. I was. Ready to talk about the letter, but wasn't sure how much you wanted to talk about it because of the process involved staff a great deal. For those of you who are able to join us at the MCCMC meeting last week. We learned from Councilmember Rice a little bit more about where things stand with redistricting issues affecting our county. Including in particular, consideration of very significant redistricting effort for our congressional district. Our local congressman, as you all know, is Jared Huffman. And the district as it currently stands extends from Marin up along the coast. I think all the way to, all the way to Oregon. I think that's, that's where it stops. And that's how it's been for at least as long as I can remember. During this current effort and redistricting is something that happens every, I think, 10 years. There is a consideration being given by a commission up in Sacramento to change that configuration quite dramatically. Rather than having a very coastal oriented district. It would be essentially a stretch from west to east. From our community across the North Bay and eventually even into the Central Valley. I think it, it caps out over in and around Dixon. That would be a very significant change, not only just to the configuration of the district itself. But also to the composition of the population and demographics that the district would represent. That's a source of concern to me and again, that was, although this process has been going on for a while. That was the first time I think any of us really heard about consideration of such a dramatic change. As a result of that. I spoke with our city manager. We decided that it was appropriate to. Express the city's concerns promptly. In the form of a letter which, which. Was prepared by staff and was given to me for review and signature on behalf of the council. On Friday. So I just want to make sure people are aware of that. You might also have seen very similarly drafted letter from county board supervisors. That went out, I think, yesterday or maybe even today. I'm not sure. But I think we were kind of first out of the box and, and acting on it because we didn't feel it was important to express reviews. Right away. So I'd just like to make sure that the council is aware of that. I think you've all seen copies of the letter at this point. Probably seen copies of the supervisor's letter, which is very similar as well. And just wanted to take the temperature to make sure that no one has an objection to the fact that we went ahead and did that. There really wasn't time to call a meeting before the end of last week, which is what we would ordinarily do with a letter like that. But because of the urgency of the matter, we decided to proceed in the way that we did. So does anyone from the council have any questions or concerns about the manner in which we proceeded?
No, it was fine. I, that came around on Friday to make sure that we were all aware of it and that was fine.
Yeah. Yeah, no, you all would have seen it the same pretty much simultaneously when we sent it off to Sacramento.
I feel like for diplomatic reasons, Mr. Mayor, I need to say for the record that the county draft, did the first draft. So their staff gets a lot of the credit for the letter. I appreciate your suggesting we were the architects of it, but.
That wasn't my suggestion. That wasn't my suggestion. My suggestion was that we were the first out of the box. That was, that was it. Because of the similarities in the letter, I figured what you just described was the case. And appreciation expressed to the county staff for putting that format together. It was very useful. As I mentioned to Shannon, who was kind of guiding the effort here, it's a heck of a lot better than I could have done on the fly. So that was, that was a good, good job on all the way around. So with that, I'll just, I just wanted to mention that before turning it over to the rest of the council. I got a couple of items to separately address, but first ask members of the council if if anyone else has a report. And council member Paulson?
Well, thank you, Mayor. So I, I first just wanted to add to the city managers, you know, gratitude for the Public Works Department and you know, just to add to that, our central Marin Fire Department as well. So from Chief Martin, I understand there were eighty-six calls for service during the pineapple storm and you know, the, the amount of follow-up and follow-through and, you know, coordination, I would say primarily coordination with the Public Works Department was really wonderful. You know, I walked around in the rain and I saw the Public Works trucks and there were downed trees and the geyser and all that. And and so again, just, just a lot of, you know, thanks for, for a job well done and a surprise. I don't think we saw it coming quite the way it did. And then to this weekend upcoming, we know it's daylight savings time. And that's typically when the neighborhood response groups try to, you know, get everybody aware and activated for the, you know, the type of drills that, that we may need for a fire or for a flood or for an earthquake, any kind of disaster preparedness. So there, I think there are eighteen members of the public on this meeting and I'm really asking you to just, just pay attention and spread the word. So, you know, there will be little boards up in all of your neighborhoods. And typically the level of effort is just to get an okay sign and, you know, and put it up on your window and some of the block captains will be walking around and really what they're trying to do is, you know, in the event of a shelter in place situation, coordinate with all the, you know, the public safety services like, like the, you know, central Marin Fire and the police and so forth. And, and, you know, some of the very basic questions like, do you have a go bag? You know, have you set up on alert Marin? Do you know how to communicate with your neighbors? Is there anybody vulnerable on your block that you should watch out for? It's a perfect time, a perfect weekend to do it. And to kind of help out, we have two events going on. So what city manager was alluding to earlier, I believe it's on November, well, actually, sorry, in Greenbry on November sixth, on that Saturday at eleven, they have a community safety fair. And it's really just a chance to meet the Greenbry folks, support them. They're trying to raise money for their trailer. But they also want to explain what these drills are about, what home hardening is about. We, we, you know, had a pretty bad fire season, a bad drought, but this is something that's gonna continue and, and this is our community's effort from the grassroots to really be prepared and resilient and adaptive. So that's on November sixth from eleven to one. And then Amy Glenn over in the NRG here in Larkspur is, is, I'm not sure, Dan Schwartz maybe can fill in with the final date and time, but I think on November seventh, in front of Magnolia in the library, they were gonna have a similar type of fair and expo. So if you have a chance, just, you know, walk down, support it, put up your okay signs and really more and more people are participating. We have forty plus energy groups and, you know, the Greenbry Hills are really getting active and we know that all of these efforts will make our community safer. So thank you so much and back to you, Mayor.
Okay, I think, thank you, Gabe. And I've got my yes or no sign ready to go to put in the window. So that's gonna be on, on Wednesday? I'm sorry, on Saturday when we're gonna have to do that?
I think the drill is on Sunday, the fairs and then the Greenbry, the, sorry, the Larkspur fairs, Greenbry on Saturday.
Well, we're ready to go. Thanks for that. Any other member of the council?
Mayor, before Councilmember Candell talked, I just want to say the latest I got is the fair in front of City Hall starts at five o'clock on Sunday.
Five to seven in front of Station fifteen.
It'll be dark. Because it's changing off of daylight savings time. Councilmember Candell?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, Councilmember Way and myself are on the, I guess, some committee for the Elysio Project, the Home Key Project. I wanted to let everybody know there is a meeting tomorrow. If you have interest, please go. What's happening is we, we've spoken to the county about this and explained our passion to make sure the city of Larkspur is, is at the table, is represented. So there's going to be kind of an advisory committee, a neighborhood committee formed. Uh, and we'd like to make sure that we have interested people on that committee. So if you attend this meeting, it would, you know, allow you to have a voice in, in the way this is gonna move forward. Please understand this is a, a county project. It's not a city of Larkspur project. We are, are fighting to have our voices heard, even though we don't have to say one way or another. But we would like the community to be involved and get community input so that we can do what is in our, our community's best interest. And to do that, we'd like to have as many people involved as possible. So it will be tomorrow on Zoom. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you for Scott. And thank you as well, Catherine, both of you for volunteering to work together with the community and the county and other parties involved to make sure that the interests of our community are represented in the going forward discussion. Catherine, did you have anything? I think you said.
Just to make sure everybody's clear on the time, it's six to eight PM tomorrow online. And I believe as you mentioned, the link to it, are we posting that on our webpage or is that on Supervisor Rice's?
On our webpage, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's really all I wanted to bring up.
Okay. Um, in that case, I just got a couple of items I just want to mention just to make sure people know that I keep busy on days other than when we have council meetings. You all may recall that MCCMC directed the that an ad hoc water committee be put together representing members of our municipalities. And this council requested I be representative to that committee. We had our first committee meeting on October twenty-sixth. I was able to join it at the outset. It was really only an organizational meeting and an opportunity to share ideas about what the role of the committee will, will, will be. I unfortunately had to leave the meeting just a little bit early to attend something more fun, which was the Larkspur, Larkspur Chamber of Commerce end of fall get together, meet and greet at GOTS at Bon Air. I saw a couple of you were able to attend and that was great because it was a great event. And I want to thank both the chamber for organizing it and as much or more for GOTS for hosting. It was a terrific venue for an event like that. They were very generous with providing food and drinks to everyone who was there. And it was, it was really a terrific event. So just kudos to, to the chamber and to GOTS for sponsoring and putting that together. Let's see, two other real quick ones. On the twenty-seventh, you all may be aware of the Bay Wave effort, which is to help develop adaptation and mitigation strategies for sea level rise on the bayside of Marin. I've been participating in the executive committee for that for some time. We did have our last meeting of the year on the twenty-seventh. Focused on a couple of things. One is a presentation on mitigation measures and adaptation measures that are being considered for Simpson Beach, which of course that's on the, the other side of Marin. But the ideas that were being presented in that context with a particular focus on nature-based mitigation strategies was very helpful and could have come in, in handy for us here on the bayside. Also heard a very interesting report from Sausalito on their task force, Sea Level Rise Task Force, which talked about how they're trying to engage the community and businesses in the community in their efforts to respond to the challenges of sea level rise. And one of the great things about their presentation is that they put together a terrific interactive map which shows areas of vulnerability and concern throughout the city of Sausalito. And it's highly detailed. It's very interactive. You can see where all their storm drains are. You can see all kinds of different things. And I, I just kind of volunteered that working together with Corbin area, we might want to see if there's something similar that we could put together for the, for the Twin Cities. It was really a terrific presentation. And then finally, just very briefly, I just wanted to mention I had a very brief but nice, all the preliminary discussion with our Tampa Pies Union High School District yesterday concerning a facilities master planning process that they are about to embark on. That will focus primarily on looking for areas where they need to do some repair rehabilitation for existing high school facilities throughout their, their jurisdiction. It's not intended to be an opportunity to make recommendations for any kind of significant new facilities, just to take care of, of maintenance and, and work on facilities that need it. And I think as they develop their plan and, and do more outreach to the community, you'll, you'll see what they mean by that. Very, very preliminary, no specific proposals. They're assessing options and also costs. But I do want to just highlight that there will be costs associated with it. And although, you know, nothing is written in stone and there are no specific plans, we should not be surprised if the district comes forward in the public in the next couple of years with a request for public funding. And that's all I have. So I think that will conclude our agenda item number six, council members' reports and comments. And agenda item number seven is public hearings. We don't have any. Item number eight is business items. We don't have any. And given that, I think it's time for us to adjourn the regular meeting to the special joint meeting of the Larkspur City Council and Planning Commission.